For the special meeting of the city council, I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. For the record, there is no one in the audience recording. At this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Counselor Jeanine Tally, would you lead us in salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation on the God-armed invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Jeanine Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schilt, Counselor Ben Hasinga.
Here.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
President.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Craigin, Counselor Cruz, six members present.
All right, I will now read the warrant. There is no one present for public forum, for the record. I will now read the warrant for the special meeting. This was posted November 18th, 2024, warrant for a special meeting of the city council. A special meeting of the city council will be held on Thursday, November 21st, 2024, at 6:00 PM, to be held in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. 01420. The agenda will consist of the following: A hearing on the classification and taxation of property according to use, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979, as amended by Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983. Per order, myself, Anthony M. Zarella, president of the city council, and posted by Joanna Bellotta Simeone, city clerk. All right, I now declare the hearing open. You guys can go right ahead when you're ready, and...
I just have a brief presentation, which will appear up the slides up top. So, good evening, Madam Mayor, President Zarella, members of the city council. My name once again is Chris Pauquet. I'm the chief assessor for the city of Pittsburgh. To my right is Mr. Ryan Bovey, who is the assistant assessor, or assessor for the city of Pittsburgh, whatever you'd like to call. I'm sure he's been called worse. I'd like to thank you all for once again taking the time to meet this evening to determine the fiscal year 2025 tax rate for the city of Pittsburgh. I'd like to start by thanking the members of my staff, as I do every year, in the assessor's office: Jerry Millet, Kelly Arsenal, Ryan Bovey, and Tom Capooti, for their hard work during this challenging recertification year. The conversion of the latest version of our assessment software has had its challenges, and all of the staff have once again rose to the occasion to show their expertise and commitment to getting the job done. This was the first quintennial recertification under the Department of Revenue's new five-year certification schedule. Previously, recertifications were to occur every three years. Tax classification is an annual process by which the city council approves the distribution of the tax burden. This also appears in your packet, but it's just a brief explanation of tax classification. It does not raise additional dollars from property tax. It simply distributes the share of taxes among property classes, those being residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. The simple, basic steps are: The city must value all property to its full and fair cash value, which is done through the recertification process. This is done on an annual basis. Classify every property according to use, once again residential, commercial, industrial, or personal, and then allocate the tax levy among those classes of property, which is what we're here to do this evening. Proposition 2 and 1/2 does not apply to the individual tax bills. It relates to the minimum amount of taxes a municipality can raise any given year. City tax levy, what can be raised annually, cannot exceed 2 and 1/2% of the prior year plus new growth, plus overrides or debt exclusions if adopted by voters. And the city taxes cannot exceed 2 and 1/2% of the city's overall value, which is known as the levy ceiling. This is just a quick way of how we arrive at the tax rate. We take the... And this slide was created several weeks ago. There might be some slight variations. It's just done to give you an idea. So, the budget that was voted on in June was approximately $68.6 million, and the overall value of the city came out to be roughly $5 billion, $80 million. So you divide the income by the value, and you get the tax rate, which we're proposing, comes out to $1,351. This is another question that often comes up: Who pays the most? So this is, it's kind of difficult on this slide, but this is a comparison of the different communities. The third slide, the fourth number in, the fourth column from the left, is Pittsburgh. And as a comparison, the sixth column from the left or in the center is Lemonster. They both pay approximately the same amount. Pittsburgh actually has the residential burden lower than any of these other communities. And on this list are Ashburnham, Ashby, Athol, Pittsburgh, Lancaster, Lemonster, Lunenburg, Princeton, Sterling, Townsend, Westminster, and Winchandon. Again, I apologize for how small the text is, but this is just to show you that who pays what for the tax burden. The dark lines are commercial, industrial, and personal property, and the red lines are residential. And then this is just a comparison of local communities, again, starting from the left to right: Ashburnham, Clinton, Pittsburgh, Gardner, Lancaster, Lemonster, Lunenburg, Princeton, Sterling, Townsend, Westminster, Winchandon, Ashby, Athol, and Air. And this is the average single-family tax bill for fiscal year '24, which was last year's, to give you an idea. Pittsburgh has the third lowest of any of the local communities. And as you can see here, it's by a lot compared to some communities that are nearly double the valuation. This year, we completed a successful revaluation and made significant improvements that allow us to fulfill future DOR goals and objectives. Our office has been working diligently, relisting real estate, reviewing data in the field, as well as through online data sources available to us. Ryan continues to spearhead multiple projects that improve both the assessment data and billing efficiencies. We're entering into the fourth year of our personal property software and data collection with vendor RRC, and seeing a tremendous improvement in the personal property valuation accuracy. This year, I'm happy to report the following: The final approval of values took place on October 18th, when the Department of Revenue issued final approval of the fiscal year 2025 values. The city currently has a value of $5,799,000. It's the highest assessed value in our history, and an increase over $644 million over last year's historic high. The Department of Revenue also approved our new growth on the same day. The new growth for fiscal 2025 was $1,645,000 tax dollars. The fiscal '25 growth was led by the revaluation and TIF adjustment of the Great Wolf Lodge, substantially increasing the amount of taxes paid in the commercial class. The continued uptick in new residential construction: 14 single-family homes, five duplexes, three single, two three-family, excuse me, and 16 condominiums last year. Commercial growth saw an increase of 53.2% in value, in increase, that being driven by the revaluation of Great Wolf Lodge. Residential growth in the residential class was 15.4%, and this is based on sales from 2023. And personal property growth was 31.2%, which also includes nearly $4 million in personal property from Great Wolf Lodge that we weren't allowed to assess prior to this year due to the TIF, the agreements of the TIF. Other revaluation statistics: The Board of Assessors analyzed all sales transactions during calendar 2023 for fiscal '25. There were 223 qualified, single-family arms-length sales with a median sale price of $398,504, an 8% increase over the year prior, in valuation, that is. Residential property values increased an additional 15.07% across the board. That's for all classes of residential property. Commercial and industrial property increased 22% and 10% respectively, and personal property showed an increase of just under 8%. Looking forward, our analysis of the year-to-date 2024 calendar sales showed a slight increase in the number of property transactions, a decrease in the inventory, and a fluctuating interest rate. Initial data shows an increase of approximately 10% in the average sale price of a single-family home at this time, at this time, at this point in the year, rather. The goals: We've begun finalizing our 2025 information, which gets wrapped up once the tax rate's set, and we're preparing for our 2026 valuations, and the cycle will continue. Our office is now focused on reviewing all areas of our tax base, continuing to improve our data quality field inspections, and implementing new technologies to increase our overall efficiency and improve customer service. And with that, I thank you all for your time, and Ryan and myself will take any questions you have.
Questions, comments from counselors? Oh, and for the record, we are now joined by Counselor Sally Craigin. Seeing no questions or... Counselor Boishman?
My question to you is, I was looking at page, what page is it, 20? I noticed you highlighted Clinton and Air, and it has a dual tax rate. And it looks like with them having a dual tax rate, it hasn't really affected the residents or business. My question to you is this: We implemented a dual tax rate, I mean, a single tax rate, four, five years ago, if I'm not mistaken?
Around there.
Around five years ago? And to be quite frank with you, it was the hope of this council that we would see changes in the marketplace, that businesses would come to Pittsburgh. And I haven't, in my personal opinion, but this is just my personal opinion, I haven't really seen that much of a difference in the business aspect of it, whereas I see Air, their valuation on a single-family home's a lot higher than what ours are. Clinton, exact same thing, a lot higher with a dual tax rate. Do you think it's good to have a single... And I don't like to compare, and I don't want to say, well, they get it over here, and we should compete with them, and they get it over here, and we got to compete with them. I mean, there's two different ballgames, if you want to go technical. I can't see the comparison. I don't know. Well, my question is, do you think it's beneficial to Pittsburgh? Is it helping us, or is it... I don't see nothing changing in the chart. You get the chart down here, you see very little change on the, you got a graph, I forget what page it is. You draw a line, and it shows very little growth, or very little changes. It's almost even, and you see us going way up, way up. I know the evaluation's gone up, and the price of property's gone up, but in the commercial aspect and industrial aspect is almost, it's a difference probably at 50 or 100 bucks. Nothing's changed really that much.
Well, we don't really, as a board, give an opinion of what we think as far as, you know, whether it's beneficial or not. I think from an economic development standpoint, it's beneficial, but again, the Board of Assessors is here to just give you the facts and have you make that determination. I don't think it's hurting the city of Pittsburgh, in that being that if I show this slide again, Pittsburgh still has the lowest residential tax burden of any of the communities around here when you look at percentage. Would I like to see more industrial properties built? Yes, I think everybody in the city would, because it shoulders the burden. But unfortunately, I left out of these, the two slides that I have, I don't have Air or Clinton in them, for the simple reason that they have a split tax rate.
Right.
But if you look at Clinton, they also still have a $500 or so, was it a $400 and change increase in the residential tax bill with a shift. So not only are they charging their businesses more, the property tax owner in a residential property's still paying over $400 more, and in Air, it's over $1,000 more than it is here.
All right. My question to you, now lately, as a counselor, and all of us, as counselors, we've been getting people coming in here for TIPS, because they want TIPS. Am I a favorite fan of TIPS? In some cases, I am, in some cases, I'm not. You think, being a businessman, you being the collectors, us just being regular people, thinking we're doing a good thing, is a TIF really helping us, or is it hurting us? In other words, we say Main Street, use Main Street. I mean, I read the paper, just like everybody here reads the paper, and there's so much tax rebate that these investors can get, sometimes I wonder why we're giving TIPS if they're getting all this tax rebate from the state and the federal government? And then we turn around, we even get TIPS?
So if I, if I'm...
Oh, go ahead, go right ahead.
Just a point of clarification, I think you're talking about TIES.
What, TIE, yeah, sorry.
Which are for residential market-rate property. It's a state program where we have to do that. The city of Pittsburgh hasn't had a TIF in years.
I mean, TIES, advantage.
So if you're talking about TIPS, I would love to see TIPS, because that, TIPS are given to commercial, industrial properties. We haven't had one of those. The Great Wolf Lodge TIF is entering year 11. That might be the...
Game on.
That's the second one we have. And then the first one is Nursery Lane, which is in year, I want to say, eight of a 10-year TIF. That's it. I've only dealt with two TIPS since I came into the city.
Game on.
They do not have one.
They don't?
They do not. They pay full fair market.
Oh, even better.
Well, what about TIES? Is it good, is it beneficial for Pittsburgh?
I think, again, that's, that's going to be a policy issue.
Counselor, he's already said that he's not here to tell us what he thinks is a good or bad idea, but I'll reiterate the conversation we had last time we were talking about TIES. They are usually given when they are necessary to make a project work, which means we're not deciding between a full tax bill or a TIE-impacted tax bill. We're deciding between no tax bill and a TIE-impacted tax bill. So we still get more money when we give the TIE, because the project doesn't happen without it.
No. I know we gave a TIE to River Street, and I understood that one, because the guy explained it to us, but there's a lot of grants, especially downtown Pittsburgh, that they are getting a lot of tax breaks in this city downtown.
Yeah, Counselor, that's a discussion for another night, because it's not impacting...
If I may, the impact was, this question came up last week from a constituent. At current, the impact, even though there are a couple of properties that aren't paying their full amount, at this point in time, we only have two TIE agreements, and the amount of money we're losing is about $26,000 a year at the current tax rate. So it's $26,000 in taxes. It's not a tremendous amount. The value comes out to about $2 million, and the difference between what they should be taxed at and what they are being taxed at.
All right. A year before.
All right, Counselor Jeanine Tally?
Thank you. So this has been a longstanding debate that is extremely difficult to explain to residents. It's very hard for me to try to explain it. It's a lot of math, it's a lot of moving parts. Page eight of this booklet, where it shows the tax levy ceiling of 2 and 1/2% and where we are today, and then in comparison, shows the tax base below that. That page is a pretty good summation of the city's position with respect to the ability to raise additional revenues through taxation, to keep up with the growth in expenses, but largely expenses that we really can't control much of, like health insurance, pensions. And I say that because if you look at page eight, and you look at 2016, 2017, we were dangerously close to the ceiling. We were at just north of 2.2% against the 2.5. And not on that page is '08, '09, '10, '11, where we were even closer. And that is a real concern when you get close to that 2 and 1/2% because then that limits... Now, when I say this, residents will rightfully say, well, isn't that a good thing, that the city will not be able to raise additional revenue? We have to deal with a balanced budget in this city. We are not the federal government who can make money come out of thin air. We have to balance to a number, and the truth is, is that the great majority of our base expenses are in schools, public works, fire, and police. It's not a scare tactic. If we were to make massive cuts to make a significant impact in lessening the tax burden on the residents, those areas would have to be touched in a significant fashion. So you want to be as far away from that 2 and 1/2% as possible. And if you look at the chart, in 2025, we are the farthest that we've been in 35 to 40 years. And that's not by accident. That's because of good, sound financial practices coupled with other factors. Now, when we talk about tax rate, and I hear my colleague from Ward 2, and I like using him as an example, because I like to think that Counselor Boishman speaks for thousands of residents in this city, who, with all due respect, don't follow this package very well. And I don't blame them. It's a lot to take in. Where he says, "I haven't seen many changes." And that is upsetting to hear, because, and maybe it's because of my perspective, where I sat here 17 years ago, and I keep referencing my history, because it grounds me in my perspective of why I believe the city is at the strongest point it's been in, in spite of our upcoming budgetary issues. Because I'm the only one here who lived through '08 to '12. No one here had that experience of what I saw, of what it means when a city comes dangerously close to the levy ceiling, and the direct impact to everyday people in our city. We have seen significant improvements. The data has said we've seen significant improvements. What he's referencing is the percentage of our residential base versus the whole pie, which has always hovered around 78 to 81%. Now, as a principal advocate of the single tax rate migration, I have never said in any of these meetings that if we got to a single rate, you will see industry abound as soon as it happens. If you go back and read the transcripts or watch the meetings, I have said that it is one significant component of many components of why we have growth in industrial and commercial, or why we don't. It's one factor. It's not the factor. And for many, many years, going back into the 1980s, if you see this city's tax base under a dual tax rate system, our residents were paying even more than they are today because, in part, that system. Because a dual tax rate system, what that means is residents get charged one rate, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property sectors get paid a much higher rate, a disproportionately higher rate. The base in commercial, industrial, and personal property makes up 19%, but they're paying a far higher rate than the other 81% under a dual system. And for many economists and others who follow that, it's not, it's not fair to have the 19% shoulder more of the burden than the 81%. But it's a political issue too, because who votes? The 81%. So the fact that this city got to a single rate in over a decade's time was a monumental achievement, if you ask me, because I didn't think it was going to happen, because it took a lot of political courage and will on the part of counselors, past and present, to keep that single rate once we achieved it. Because there's a lot of pressure to go back to what we were doing. Because if we go back, and you look at one of the pages in this book, if we went back to a single rate, a dual rate, you could invariably lower the average tax bill for a single-family home. But look at the other side, what happens to them. Now, Pittsburgh is not awash in massive industry. Companies like Great Wolf, Unitil, they can shoulder a dual tax rate. They're multimillion-dollar corporations, they can eat the money easily. My concern is the great majority of commercial businesses in this city that are mom-and-pop businesses, like Papa's Pantry, like, pick one, Dario's, just pick any small restaurant, clothing store, bar. They make up the majority of the number of businesses, maybe not the value, obviously, but the majority. If we go back to a dual rate, then those small business owners are going to get creamed on their tax bill, either through their landlord or directly. And I don't think that's fair. And I don't see how that helps this city one bit with at the very least trying to maintain that 81% and not make it get bigger. Because when businesses leave, and you have vacant buildings, those buildings decrease in value, and then who makes up for that decrease in value? The 81%, the residents. So the dual tax rate has always been sold as a mechanism to keep people's bills lower, when it's had the adverse effect. That value that goes away on that side of the equation doesn't go away into thin air. Someone's got to pick up for it. So the residents have to. So to incentivize an economic climate where 90% of the county does not do it, and now we're part of that 90%, all it will do is ensure that businesses leave, and that doesn't help anybody, certainly the residents. So now that we are at a single rate, we need to stay there. If for no other reason than to ensure that we are competitive with our competition across the state, and to ensure that these businesses stay. Because to go back would be a significant burden on them. And so we've seen significant improvements here, and I'm not saying that it's because of the single rate, but it's certainly not, I'm not saying it's because of that, but it's a factor, for all I know. Because if a business owner wants to come to Pittsburgh, and the rate is $1,351,000, why would they go to Worcester, where it's like 20-something? For a small business owner, that's a massive difference in taxes. Again, I'm not talking about Great Wolf or Unitil, they don't care. A $10,000 tax increase on them, they won't even, it's a front fly to them, who cares? But to these folks, it's significant. So we need to stick with the single rate, and we need to do so, because to not do so would put us in an avenue of non-competitiveness from a tax perspective. We also have other factors in the city against us. We don't have direct access to the highway, like all these other communities do. We don't have the level of developable land near highways, like Lemonster, where there's ripe for commercial-industrial development, new development. And we don't have the luxury of not having a company like Unitil, who has the highest rates in the state. So why would we hurt our business community by making them be taxed even more when they shoulder only a fifth of the pie? This is our ability as a council to, at least on that side of their ledger, keep their costs in check, especially in this climate we're in today with inflation and all the costs going up. To go back to a dual rate would make no economic sense whatsoever. And I'll end with this. My computer went into sleep mode, but what is the, can you quickly read for me on that page that shows the increase/decrease for a single-family home, if it's 100%? What's the number this year is like $100 and something?
$167.36.
So $167. So 167. So every year when we have this meeting, the residents, by and large, will ignore everything in the book and everything we're saying and go to that page and go, what's my bill going to be next year? Understandably. And they see the word increase, and they stop. 167 is about $13.91 more a month, on average. Some people may see more, some people may see less, but $13.91 an increase on average. And as was shown in the chart that I hope residents will look at, out of all of the communities around us, we are the lowest. Yes, our values are lower by comparison, but I say to people, if you take your home and dump it in Lemonster where the valuations are around $100,000 more, your tax bill's going to be more. We are an affordable community. What you get in Pittsburgh, you're not going to get much more in Lemonster, but you're going to pay a heck of a lot more. So we are an affordable community to live in. It's right there. So 167 for one year, if you go back in history, and I used to have this information, I don't have it at the ready, I remember years on the council under a dual system where that increase was double, if not two and a half times what it is. I think over the last few years, it's been under 200 bucks, maybe saved one year, but it's been relatively under $200 a year. Whereas before the single-rate system, it was 300, $400 a year. And Mr. Park had alluded to that earlier about Air and these other communities. So there is some comparative congruence with the single-rate system and where we've been going. But no one ever said that our tax base for commercial industrial is going to triple as a result of it. No one's ever said that. What we've said is, we're not competitive, we're not attracting people to come here from a business perspective, and we're having difficulty retaining them because we have Unitil. So we have to do something different. So the facts and the information clearly point to the single tax rate at a minimum not hurting us. But there's evidence that a dual-rate system will hurt us. The residents may see a drop in their rate in year one, but in five or six years, once that system's in, watch what their increases will become because it's already happened. So, and that's my perspective of this whole subject based on where we were 15, 20 years ago, in a far different position. And I just want to end with this, that, because I've had residents ask me, well, if the levy is raised 2.5%, then wouldn't my bill go up 2.5%? The 2.5% is what we raise on the levy, the amount of taxes we can collect. Let's say that increase is $2 million. What we're here to do tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is decide how that $65 million levy number is going to be paid between the residents and the businesses. And in order to decide on that, we have to come to a rate per $1,000 valuation. So all we're doing this evening is setting the rate. The tax increase was already baked when the budget was passed. Now we're just figuring out how to distribute that increase. And what I'm advocating for is that the increase be equitably distributed from a rates perspective across the sectors. That's all we're here to decide tonight, is whether we want to tax businesses the same rate as residents, or do we want to have the businesses pay far more? Now, if we had 90% of our business base be Great Wolves and Unitil, I would agree that maybe a dual rate would be better because they're not going to care. Most of our business community are Papa's Pantry across the street. We need to ensure they've got enough to worry about on their bottom lines. Why do we have to burden them even further? And by doing so, we hurt our own residents, not help them. So we need to stick with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to very briefly add to that, that I would even go a step further than that. I would say, under no circumstances would I support going back to a split rate because, as Counselor Janice Hally has alluded to, municipal taxation, at least in the state of Massachusetts, is not like state and federal taxation. In the state and federal taxation system, the legislature sets a rate. That rate is applied to whatever is being taxed, and the result is the revenue, which is a variable number. They don't know necessarily each year how much they're going to raise from taxes. They can project, but it's just a function of applying the rate to the things being taxed. We do it backwards. We decide how much money we need, apply that across the amount of value that we have to tax, and that gives us our rate, correct? So if we were simply arguing about, well, and we're not arguing, I think we're mostly in consensus, but if we were discussing whether to simply change the tax rate on businesses versus residential properties, that would be mostly just a political discussion, in my view. But we're not. What we are actually doing is discussing whether we should literally take a portion of the taxes that are being assessed against residential properties and bill that portion to the commercial properties instead. We're literally saying, if we adopt a split tax rate again, we are literally telling our business community, you have to pay your taxes and a portion of the residents' taxes. And to me, that is direct and literal theft. We are literally telling someone, you pay someone else's bill. I will never vote for that. I'm glad that we got down to a zero shift, and even if every single business in the city were phenomenally wealthy, it would simply be wrong to go back to a split tax rate, in my view. That being said, you know, as I said, I think we're mostly in consensus, so any further questions or comments?
I just want to make one clarifying statement. I keep referencing Papa's Pantry, and I just recall that FSU owns that facility, and so I believe they don't pay property tax.
They have a portion for what they are.
Okay.
Pittsburgh State gets a bill for their section.
Okay, but, okay, so they do. Through that, okay, so they do. But even if they didn't, the general point still stands that it's, most of our business community are small business owners who obviously do pay property taxes. And so the points I was raising and the logic applies just the same. I just wanted to make clear on that. Thank you.
And they would pay personal property taxes on their equipment anyway, even if the building were exempt. All right. No further questions? Do I have a motion?
Will we close the hearing?
Oh, yes, I should close the hearing first. If all have been, I will note for the record, there are no members of the public present here, whether wishing to speak or otherwise. So all have been heard. I now declare the hearing closed. And what I would need is, rather than a motion to approve, I would need a motion to set the tax shift at a particular number, which in this case would be...
Motion to set the rate at 100, a single rate?
Second. Have a motion and second to set the, to maintain a single tax rate, a 100 shift. Any objections? Seeing none, it is unanimous. That concludes our business for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.